At six eighteen, we are back from executive session. No action was taken and we will be in recess until six thirty.
It is six thirty and we are going to call this meeting to order. And we will first have prayer led by Councilmember Floyd McLennan. Floyd?
Bow your head, close your eyes. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together in fellowship this evening. We ask that you will open our hearts, bring our minds together, and may we, may we lead with love. May you and the Holy Spirit guide us in governance so that when we finish this evening, that it will be the best for our city and for our constituents. We ask these things in love and in faith, your son Jesus, and then we pray. Amen.
Councilmember Day, will you lead us in a pledge?
So tonight, we're going to be starting with a proclamation. This proclamation is pretty special to me as well as probably one of our former mayor pro temp council members that is here tonight. Ms. Lorna Kipit, thank you for helping me with this. But for the veterans and for those who have family members that are veterans, this individual we're going to be recognizing tonight has played taps and has been a part of this community and the ceremonies that we have had for as long as I can remember. So, Lorna, again, thank you for helping me put this together and to the family, we're going to recognize Mr. Morgan Pyatt. So I'm going to make my way to the podium and Morgan, if you can join me there, please, sir. So I'm going to make my way to the podium, and Morgan, if you can join me there, please, sir.
Apologize for that. So this is a proclamation of appreciation where as we hereby today express our gratitude and honor, Morgan Pyatt for volunteering his services to McLennan Chism at Memorial Day and Veteran Day events. Whereas Morgan Pyatt, a 2023 graduate of Rockwall Heath High School, once a resident of Heath, is now a resident of McLennan Chism. Whereas his passion for music has motivated him to participate in both competitive and performance music ensembles such as the Rockwall Philharmonic Orchestra and self-assembled group of student trumpet players. He is also part of the weekly music ministry at First Baptist in Rockwall. Whereas Morgan began playing taps for the City McLennan Chism Memorial Day events when he was in middle school and has selflessly volunteered his time to do so year after year. Whereas Morgan will be attending Abilene Christian University in the fall to pursue a degree in music education. His intent is to build a career in music performance and production and plans to teach those skills to others. Now therefore, I Brian McNeil, Mayor of McLennan Chism, on behalf of the City Council, to hereby present you this proclamation of appreciation. Thank you. And would the council like to join? I mean, especially the veterans. Morgan's been doing this for quite some time. Chief, you're a veteran. Would you like to come up here? You're a part of our stuff.
Yep, you just got volunteered. Just like the old days there.
I appreciate all you do for us. Got Floyd.
All right. So, rules of the quorum, as always, we respect and care for one another, so we'll just keep that going. And we have citizen comments, and we will start with Ms. Jennifer Heldrich. If you can, when you come to the podium, just make sure you state the address.
Jennifer Heldrich, 601 Broglin McLennan Chism. I just wanted to thank the staff and all of you guys for the executive session. Obviously, we don't know the outcome of it. Glen Acres is a hot mess with a road. I just got an $1,800 bill for my car repairs, so, because it's such a hot mess. But I know that you guys have been working diligently on our behalf, not on our behalf, but to consider some avenues for us to take some next steps. So I wanted to thank you for your time and your effort, and we look forward to positive resolution for ourselves at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. Tom Milner, and again, if you don't mind stating the address. Thank you.
Tom Milner, 641 Glen Acres Drive. I'm also a member of the Glen Acres Estates Residential Community, and I also want to thank the council and the mayor for discussing our plight during the last executive session. We've been up here numerous times, begging for help, pleading for help, and finally, somebody's listening, and we do appreciate it. And we're looking forward to discussing what you have for us to take with us to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate you. And last will be Mr. David Black.
I'm at 1419 Siano Lane, McLennan Chism. I'm referring to 10.8, the Economic Committee. So I have like questions, but I suspect your talk will maybe answer them anyway. But I just want to see. Maybe you'll be generating a detailed plan for commercial development on the Economic Council? We know the desires of the citizens from the City Comprehensive Plan, and more recently, feedback from citizens. For example, we don't like restaurants that sell alcohol on premises and have a drive-up window. That developer kept coming back with that darn window. Sorry, no sale. Will the Economic Committee spend some time studying that large property on SH 205 across from Sonoma Verde? It includes the proposed O'Reilly Auto Parts store, a one-acre lot. That is next to the Brookshire property, which is to be a future grocery store or whatever if they decide to sell the lot. Do we know what else the developer has in mind for that 31.5-acre property? The owner is McLennan Chism Commercial Holdings. Will we use an ad hoc approval process for each lot? Do we already have an understanding of the layout of such a large tract? That is, does the developer have plans for stores, the kinds of stores and things? And what's the visual appeal of their plan, if they have one? So for instance, is there an idea of the layout of lane accesses among future businesses on the property? Of course, you kind of have to know what the businesses are for that. So it's more of a comprehensive layout that I'm suggesting. Or are all immediate accesses directly to SH 205, which I would think would be a problem? Do we care if the layout of businesses is ordered in some way categorically, categorically by type? So for instance, like clothes, restaurants, boutique hair salons, and automobile parts and other greasy stuff? Or is it all going to be mixed together according to whoever comes up with a subdivision of something they want to put there? Like this auto parts store, which is fine. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Black. That is all on citizens' comments. I do give an opportunity if anyone does have anything they want to add. Nope. Do you have comments, Tom? Oh, no, I apologize. I'll speak louder. Apologize. All right, we will close citizens' comments at, I have, 6:40. All right, we will go into consent agenda. I'll talk louder, Tom. I apologize. We have consent agenda 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3. Does anyone on council have any reason to remove anything from consent agenda? If there's no removal of anything from consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as provided.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Day. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Showed unanimous. All right, we will now move on to our items for consideration and action. And again, bear with us, we have made some changes. If you don't recall, the City Secretary will read the item, and then we will go, go from there. And the hope is to speed things along, so, Secretary.
Discuss and consider approving the Infomart amended and restated service contract for the provisions of sanitary sewer, solid waste, and recycling services.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to move that we discuss and consider approving the Infomart amended and restated service contract for the provision of sanitary sewer, solid waste, and recycling services.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And I have a second, and we will go into discussion. Conrad?
Good evening, Mayor members of the council. This item with Infomart is a familiar one. We've had it on our agenda a couple of times. It's for an amended agreement. Basically, for utility services for specifically trash and recycling services that the council requested that they, see if they could provide for us. They've approved that, and you have a copy of that agreement, that amended agreement, in your, in your packet, which has highlighted the only changes, which includes the 375 for each household to complete those. There's some narrative language that's in small print about the CPI and their ability to increase their costs annually based on the CPI and an ongoing monthly charge that's on there. So those are the only things that are, everything else to read in the agreement is continuous with sewer agreement that we have had with Infomart for utility billing as well as O and M for our sewer system, our sanitary sewer system, which they've been over and completing for approximately a decade here in the city. With that, we also have a representative from Infomart here tonight. Mr. Cameron, good last name, Cameron. Cameron's here to answer any questions if you have some, and also representative from CWD, Jason Rammer.
So if you, would y'all be okay if y'all were both up there so that way we can probably just knock this out real quick? So, Conrad, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I know this has been going on for a minute. We have talked with both CWD and Infomart. We as a council know that this has been an issue with billing. And so we did have meetings with them, but the best way to put a lot of this to rest is to have them both here at the same time. And so that's why, well, that's why I asked for them to both be here at the same time. So we'll start down here like we always do. Councilmember Easter.
I'm going to pass. I've got no questions at this point.
Councilmember McLennan, do you have anything? Councilmember Brewer? And Councilmember Day? Y'all might get off easy.
You probably will. I'm not going to ask a whole lot of questions other than to say, I did have the opportunity to sit in on a meeting with CWD, and they answered a lot of the questions. They've been made aware of many of the concerns that are coming from our constituents that have been going, that have been ongoing. But I'm satisfied with many of their answers. We're probably going in the proper direction through this partnership we have with both of them. And so I'm intending to support this, given the information that I currently have. I just wanted to put that out.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Councilmember Day and I attended the meeting with both of y'all, and I was satisfied with the answers provided by both of you. And we certainly fleshed out a lot of difficulties that we discerned at one point not being so much of a difficulty. There's maybe some misunderstandings, but that being said, I'm fairly satisfied that we're going to be going in the right direction in letting Infomart take this over and letting CWD defer from not taking it over. And I think that was your preference not to, that pass it on to Infomart. Infomart has history in terms of being able to do this adequately and sufficiently. They're organized for that purpose. So I'm in agreement.
The only, the only questions I had, and I may have forgotten to answer. I want to make sure that, you know, for the constituents that we answer to, you know, when they have an issue and they, it's been, one of the difficulties I've seen is they don't know who to call, right? It's like they call one for one issue, one for another issue. So my ask is CWD, just and Infomart both, make sure your people are just mindful that, you know, it's people calling, but they're calling because they're just frustrated, right? You know, they just want to, I feel like if they understand the systems or they understand the why, then I feel like they adopt it better. It's when we don't know the why and it's just, that's just the way it's going to be. You know, no one wants that as the answer. So my ask is just be mindful that they're, if CWD, if they call you, don't just say, oh, that's Infomart now, right? And Infomart, you know, they call you, you know, and we also, as the city, need to be mindful of that too when we take calls. So that's my only ask. So does anyone have any questions now? Yes, sir.
If, is there a cost difference between CWD doing it, taking over and doing it, and Infomart doing it now? That's my question.
Great question. We'll let them answer that. But from what I understand, there was not a difference. But I'll let you guys, if it is, it's within dollars. So Infomart, if you want to start?
Oh, okay. The cost difference as far as what the customer sees. You have the base trash rate, which is $30.45, and then there is a franchise fee and sales tax. I'm not sure which one of those are new. It may be the sales tax or maybe the franchise fee. But the franchise fee and the base amount come up to 3402. And then you have that state required sales tax since it is a separate line item. And I think that's what's causing the change in price. But I believe that comes up to about $35 and some change in all. So that's the only difference on the customer side.
So 35 and change, and then Jason, what would your, so you bill three months at a time. So what would have your been, your total have been?
Well, you have to go back a little bit, and again, Jason Rammer, Vice President, Community Waste Disposal. You know, we made this change January 1 of this year. At that time, there was, CWD approached the city, presented an offer as part of our contract renewal. And with that, it would be passing the billing on. There were some savings in the rate we were. There's also a cost associated with Infomart. If you kind of roll all that back and go through the cost adjustment and add them back on with these franchise fees, I mean, we're within, we would be within a dollar, I think, of what Infomart would be. Some of these discussions are what does the franchise fee, for instance, need to be? And, you know, in my world, I care about the, kind of the dollar I get. You know, if we bill a dollar twenty, I'm only getting a dollar. So that's some of the discussion there.
So it's, it is within a dollar of the billing?
Because there would be costs to switch back to CWD and redo this, redo all this again.
So right now, for, if we are a dollar, it's $12 in the year.
That's, I think that would be the end result if this rolled back.
Okay, so with that, does anyone have any other questions?
I was just talking to a couple just a minute ago about their Infomart bill. There seems to be some confusion whether it's, because it's a past due notice, whether or not that's a trash issue or a sewage issue. And when they tried to call, they couldn't get a hold of a supervisor to explain it. And they're in the back. So at some point, if you wouldn't mind, just.
Of course.
I appreciate that.
Understood.
Did you have anything, Councilmember Easter?
Yeah, yeah, I do have something. I mean, you mentioned that there's a three-month billing cycle for CWD and a one month for Infomart. And given the difficulties we've had with billing thus far, it would seem prudent to kind of try to at least stay where we're at and keep the billing on time rather than trying to change in the middle of the year and then having another nine months to try to figure out where we're at sometime around, I don't know, March, and we're having this discussion again.
It's, that's a great point you brought up. When we had met with Jason, and to be transparent, if, if this was to go back to CWD, it would benefit them better to start in January. So that means you would still have to finish out Infomart for the rest of this year. And mind you, there would be a rate change in January, if I'm not mistaken from the conversation. So by staying with CWD, we've ironed out, or I'm sorry, staying with Infomart, we iron out, we allow it to go through because going back to CWD, it wouldn't happen until most likely January anyhow, and there will be a rate increase. So I guess the point is I want to make sure that people know that we as a council and a city did work with both of them to try to make sure that y'all were getting the best deal. I think at the end of the day, once the kinks are starting to get ironed out with Infomart, I think we'll be fine and happy. And it'll allow CWD to just concentrate on trash and grow that, and then Infomart will handle the other two. handle the other two, so there's no other questions. We've had the motion and the second. Go ahead, don't apologize.
I just wanna make sure I understand too. I think, and I've talked to Conrad a little bit about this, the monthly fee that is charged... Sonoma Verde's not getting double charged the monthly fee, correct? It's just the 375 for their sewer and trash, and then everybody else, it's 375 for the trash. Is that correct?
Yeah, that'll be in our contract. Yeah, it's the same rate, 375 across the board, and that's been the same since 2014, so that amount hasn't changed.
Okay, so really, we're adding households outside of Sonoma Verde, and if we were to go back to CWD, then we're looking at the whole city as an additional cost. We're saying, in other words, you know, they're billing for two services one time, same amount. See what I'm saying? Correct? So, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I just wanted, before we finish this thing, I've had the opportunity to work closely with both of these two gentlemen, Jason from CWD and Cameron from Infomarc. They have been completely professional, excellent to work with. I get thoughts in my head sometimes at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, and I text one and/or both of them and thinking, "Oh, they'll get it tomorrow morning," and two minutes later, they're texting me back with the answer. So I mean, amazing how... And I'm not saying you have to do that or even do it, but I mean, great customer service, and they're both in it. When I say professional, they wanna get it right as much as every homeowner in the city wants to knock out the kinks. Infomarc has even offered and will start providing the council with a monthly letter, management report, and if there are things that you'd like to see different than what they give you, we can alter that around and get you the report that you want every month. And we could even put that on a website for every resident in the city to see, just to keep updated, so we're... I mean, and they're offering that to say, "Look, we wanna be the best we can be for your residents." So I appreciate working with them.
Funny you say that. I'll echo that. I actually texted Jason, was that Sunday night? Or, no, it was Thursday night. We just happened to be walking the neighborhood and the Noah resident didn't have their trash picked up. I texted him at like 8:30, 9:00 at night, and then he's like, "Send me the address, send me a phone number," and then he's like, handles it before, and then they picked it up on Saturday. So I echo that. So with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
I put my paper in.
Oh.
So you need a... You need a committee? It was on Citizens' Comments.
I don't have anything on Citizens' Comments.
And I put it in, you skipped over me. And I really do have something that I think you ought to hear.
Well, I... I don't have it. I don't have anything. That's my agenda. Those are the comments that were turned in to me.
You open up your... You're right on your end.
Yep.
You all ready to vote?
Well, I can rehear the vote, but you can go ahead. Just give me one second, make sure... How do I do this, since this is a new one for me? This was Citizens' Comments. We closed Citizens' Comments. Do I need to reopen Citizens' Comments?
I don't think so. I think...
Just let them be heard?
Yeah, he submitted it on time, it was proper, just, you know, because we didn't see it, I think he should still be...
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're fine, just let him speak on this item.
And then as far as that agenda item, since I'm assuming that's what he's fixing to speak on, can we make sure... Does it... How does that work, since we did a vote? Will we be doing a revote?
Uh, no, I mean, if... We've got 5203. If you feel like what you hear, the council needs to reconsider the vote, we can use that process. So there are ways that if he says anything and the council says, "Yeah, we need to bring this back," we can always have council put it back on the agenda.
Okay, so then, go ahead, Tom. We apologize.
Now, I got my first... The reason I have serious... I am really offended by Infomarc for incompetence, poor service, and inaccuracy. Now, like, my very first bill, you can see up here it says, "Service period, 11/30/23 to 12/31/23." The last I heard, that's the month of December, and this is supposed to be for trash. Well, I already paid that. CWD bills us three months and then crack, so I tried to call them up and said, "Hey, you're double billing me." And I'm assuming that everybody else in McLendon-Chisholm got double billed, but I was about the only one who noticed it. You know, 35 years of fighting with a computer, I learned one thing. The computer will do what you tell it to do, not what you want it to do. You put a zero where there's supposed to be a one, or an A where there's supposed to be a B. You hope that it catches it, because if it doesn't, you could have all kinds of other problems. Like, for instance, some of the programs I worked on, the B2, the FAT, the F15, the F4, the C17. One B2 is between one and a half and $2 billion. You make a mistake on that, and you could either lose an airplane or a series of airplanes, you could kill the two pilots, neither of which is a good idea. So one thing you learn, you do it right. You don't screw it up like this is. So I went in and tried to talk to the people, customer disservice, as I call them, and they told me all about sewer service, water service, and then I said, "Fix it. You send me a right bill for January and I'll pay it." This is August. I have yet to receive an accurate bill for January. You know, in my years of computer programming, I know it's not too awful hard to write a billing program that's accurate. It's a lot harder to write a CAD program which generates shapes for airplanes, a little more complicated, but just moving data around, that's not a big deal. I mean, I could write one, you know, and I haven't written code in 25 years. Okay, so that was the first bill. So then I get another bill, it's the exact same copy, same thing for December, and I said, "Hey, if I pay this, that implies that you did something for me in December that I'm paying for." I didn't do that. I don't sign or pay for things which obligate me when it's not true. So first two months, I didn't get a bill. I didn't pay it. Well, with the second bill I got, what did they do? They had the gall to charge me a late fee for something which I didn't know in the first place. Now, that's pretty ridiculous. That just shows you how incompetent they are. They don't understand what they're doing. See, what else happened here? Well, I finally figured out by talking to my neighbors, oh, actually, my daughter, and she told me that the bill that was $36.53 is what they're supposed to be billing me for, for three months. So finally, I started figuring this out. What?
We're at time, so if you just wanna... I'll give you like 30 seconds to... We're at time, so if you wanna... 30 seconds, we'll wrap this up.
Okay, all right. I'm just saying, if I wrote code the way these guys write a billing program, I would've got fired and I probably would've got people killed.
Thank you, Tom. Conrad, can we... I know I can't converse with Tom, but I know I can direct staff on this. So what I would like to have done is if we can reach out to Infomarc tomorrow on behalf of Tom Hertz, I know they don't have to share things with us, but I'd like to at least be able to get Tom answers, find out what happened with this late fee, why it's taken so long while we're in August. Let's at least get Tom the answers he deserves. Thank you. And thank you, Tom. I apologize that we missed you on Citizens' Comments. All right, we will go to item 10.2. Angela?
10.2, discuss and consider approving resolution of the City Council of the City of McLendon-Chisholm, Texas. Establishing the City of McLendon-Chisholm meets the constitutional requirements to hold an election on the matter of adopting a home rule charter commission consisting of up to 15 members, including the designation of a commission chairperson, providing for joint meetings with city council, providing compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, and providing an effective date.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilmember Brewer, you're on deck, sir.
Okay, so in the process of home rule, we've already established our population. We've had a town hall to talk about home rule. We've asked for applications, and so the next stage is the city council authorizing the creation of a home rule commission. We've... Within the resolution, we've put it up to 15, and we'll, in the next item, we'll go over those who applied, but I can tell you, we had a really good turnout. We had 19 apply, which was great. So in this resolution also, it says that we will comply with the Open Meetings Act, so all the meetings will be public. It also has in here that we will select the chairperson for this commission of up to 15 members, and the goal is to have a charter completed in time for a May 3 election. And I think that's... That covers it.
Councilmember Easter, do you have anything on this, sir?
I do not.
Councilmember McLendon? Councilmember Day?
No comments.
Mayor Pro Tim, sir? All right, all those in favor for this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. We will now go to 10.3. Angela?
10.3, discuss and consider nominations for appointments to the City of McLendon-Chisholm Home Rule Charter Commission.
I'll entertain a motion on this, please.
Make a motion to consider nominations and appointments to the City of McLendon-Chisholm Home Rule Charter Commission.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Brewer, you're on deck again, sir.
Okay, as I said, there was 19 that applied, and I want to thank everybody that applied. And these are the nominations for this commission, for me. Mark Russo, Jody Wright, Anthony Crawford, Rich Dean, Leslie Shawali, Jen Hildreth, Dennis London, James Adcox, Bev Stibbins, Darius Boe, Troy Reich, Melody Osorio, Aaron McDonald, John Powers, and Roberta Dolan.
Okay, so these are the nominations that you're putting forward with this. Do you have to nominate a chair at this time as well, or is that after you approve these?
We can include it in there. I would nominate as chair, Mark Russo.
Okay, so Councilmember Easter, do you have any questions on any of these nominations?
I do not.
Councilmember McLendon? No, sir. Councilmember Day, do you have any?
No.
And Mayor Pro Tim?
No.
Well, with those nominations, all in favor, say aye.
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 And welcome to the Home Rule Charter, to those members. I believe there's a meeting?
Yeah, there'll be a first meeting on the 15th at 6:30 here at City Hall. It's mainly to kind of pass out reference materials, get everybody introduced, kind of talk about the timeline and things like the Open Meetings Act and Roberts Rules of Order, that kind of thing, so everybody's kind of familiar. And then they'll be setting up their dates for future meetings after that.
Jerry, is that gonna be at 6:30?
Yes, 6:30.
And Angela, we have all the contacts for everyone that he's basically just put on this commission, and they'll be notified for that meeting on the 15th at 6:30?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, again, congratulations to them. 10.4, Angela?
Consideration and action regarding approval of the preliminary plat that provides the development of 93 single-family lots on 18.672 acres of land located in the City of McLendon-Chisholm's extraterritorial jurisdiction, generally located at the intersection of FM 548 and Mann Road.
I'll entertain a motion on item 10.4.
I'll make a motion that we start discussions on that for consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, and we'll start with Conrad.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Members of the Council. This agenda item is the approval of a preliminary plat in the Maraki Telus development area of 93 single-family lots. It is in the city's ETJ, meaning that the city has no zoning authority, however, has jurisdiction in the approval of the preliminary plat. We have our city planner here to go more specifically into this overall request.
Thank you, Conrad, Mayor, Members of the Council. So the request is, the applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat that provides for the development of 93 single-family lots on 18.67 acres of land located generally at the intersection of FM 548 and Mann Road. The application is administratively complete and in conformity with the City of McLendon-Chisholm's Code of Ordinances. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended it. Staff is recommending approval as well. Like I said, the... Like I said, the application is administratively complete, and it does comply with our subdivision regulations. And then we do have, uh, Mr. Colton Smith, who is from Spires, who has been working on this project with us, and so he'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have about the development project.
Thank you, Asa. Um, thank you, Conrad. Um, Mr. Easter, thanks for, uh, starting this open for discussion. One thing I want to remind people, just 'cause, uh, there's a motion made and a second made, it's, that allows us to be able to talk about it. So I think a lot of people, when they hear that, they're thinking, oh, that is allowing us to, to bring it to this discussion at this point. So, uh, Councilmember Easter?
I, I've got no questions at this.
Councilmember McLendon? Councilmember Brewer? Councilmember Day?
You might need to come back to, give me a moment.
Council, or Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, this is, uh, this is in the ETJ, and this is a, this is a municipal utility district. Am I correct on that?
Yep.
And I remember having spoken to you, to you guys some time ago. And so, we have limited, uh, ability to really control much of this, uh, with it being in the ETJ and specifically it being a, a, a mud. But we do have some jurisdictions. I just have a, one question, since I'm on the Water Committee, and where is it that you are, are getting your water from for this overall project?
Uh, High Point Sud.
High Point delivers to you?
Yes, sir.
And that's through, High Point goes through Terrell, no, goes through Fornie, doesn't it?
It mostly comes through Fornie, and they got a lineup five forty-eight that serves the subdivision.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I've, I've watched you, uh, down there trimming the land up, and so they destroy the, the old house there that was, uh, built back in the seventies, and I think that thing was gone within moments, but, uh, yeah, I, I hope you succeed in the project.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Day, we'll come back to you.
Yeah, Asa, will you do me a favor and go onto the overhead projector and open up a Google Maps image of that location so that the public knows which area we're looking, we're looking at? Or is Asa, did Asa, oh, he's there. No, I, I, or whoever could do it. I, I was, I just, in my, in my ethos, I saw him over off to the corner, and I actually saw the chief, sorry.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Of me?
No, of him.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll.
Hey, what, what they're going-
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to defer to-
Just, well, they're going through that process of trying to raise up the Google Map on it. Um, question on the, on the five, um, the five forty-eight, that, that's right on the five forty-eight. When is it expected that that five, because I think, I think there's twenty-seven hundred homes in this project overall? Do I recall that correctly?
Give or take, that's close.
And so, when is it to be expected that the five forty-eight will be enlarged to, I think, a, a four-lane, uh, road? How long would that, uh, uh, take, and will it impact your, your, your development at all?
Yes, that's a tech dot project, so I don't, I'm not sure, you know, their timelines can stretch out or shrink. I know they've already cleared the right-of-way, and obtained a right-of-way. Um, we've obtained a driveway permit from them for our connection that accounts for the future expansion, um, but I, I don't know the exact timeline of their improvement.
Will the, the outer loop impact your development in any fashion? Have, do, will the outer loop in, impact your development in any fashion? The outer loop that's going through the county, you have from Kaufman, coming up from Kaufman County up by the eighty and the twenty, coming up through?
I don't believe so. That's not come up, and-
So, if it hasn't come up in conversation, you're not really, most likely it won't. Thank you.
Correct. I believe we're in the Kaufman County Emergency Services District, number six, and they're still working through all the details of fire service, emergency services in general. Sure thing.
Have you entered into a fire agreement?
Um, I, I don't believe the developer's formally entered into a fire agreement. Um, he's been more in the loop on that, sorry, he's out of town.
Understood, thank you.
We'll make sure we keep everybody in the loop, as we get it all figured out.
Sorry for the delay, guys, but... Are, they're not able to pull up the Google Earth image? No, that's a, that's a plat map. I want to see an aerial image of the site, specifically, because there's some indications in here that might be a concern. So I'm not, I'm not doing it for no reason. Mayor, if you want to, while they're pulling that up, I'll go ahead and defer it over, or do the gavelless.
Can I put us in a five-minute recess while they do this? Give everybody, I'm just going to put us in a five-minute recess, um, here at, uh, seven eighteen. We'll take five minutes while they get this going.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to be back from recess at seven twenty-five. So we will continue off now that we've got the, uh, Google Maps image that, uh, Councilmember Day was concerned with, so let's, uh, go back to Councilmember Day. Thank you all, everyone, for the patience.
Thank you very much. I have several questions, I mean, as we're going through it, and some of these are just off the top of my head, I haven't, I mean, again, I've just now seen this image for the first time. Um, I'm going to request a topographical map and get a, a good understanding. This is, from what I understand, is part of the Triple Creek. Uh, develop, is it not? Near? Sorry, did I misspeak? Yes, sorry, Maraki, yes, Maraki, sorry, I, my apologies. Uh, but near, near the same location where the Triple Creek situation is happening here, the confluence. Gotcha. So that's the location that I have. Yeah. So the question I have, I mean, it's, it's very clear that you're, you're very close to some interesting floodplain confluences that are happening out there, which is what my suspicion was based upon the images that you had submitted as part of this application. So what is being done to ameliorate the floodplain situation that you have out there?
Um, on this particular plat, we've delineated a floodplain easement that we're staying outside of, on-site, not dealing with this particular phase, but there are two, um, Soil Water Conservation District ponds. We've worked with them for approval of all the work in and around their ponds, um, and in, on this particular phase, where I don't believe we're touching any floodplain.
So you're intending that the entire lot be buildable acres? Is that what you're intending to do?
Sorry, come again, I didn't quite catch.
You're intending to build on the entire property, there isn't going to be open space?
There will be open space, yeah. It's a master plan community, so this is part of Phase One of seven. Um, so there's open space around two large Soil Water Conservation District ponds and throughout, and the trail system, and it, it'll be a, a highly amenitized community when it's completed.
But, but not on this nineteen acres?
No, that nineteen acres is just a portion of Phase One. We have come before y'all before with Phase One A and Phase One B, which do include open space and a lot for a future amenity center. This was just some additional lots that got added to Phase One, kind of late in the game, so it was a separate preliminary plat.
I'm going to hold off any further questions for the moment.
Well, I do have a question, now that you mentioned the soil conservation retention ponds. Are those anywhere near these homes? And the reason that I'm asking is, we have a soil conservation retention pond here in town, and it's created some issues, and I don't know where this is located relative to all of these homes, but who, what degree of maintenance is ongoing with those ponds? And do those pose a potential issue similar to the one that we're encountering here for this phase? Because in hindsight, it may have been more appropriate to do the development around here adjacent to that pond a little differently, and it'd be nice to make sure that there's lessons learned on what not to do or what to do.
Yes, for sure. So, um, these homes are actually upstream of the Soil Water Conservation District pond, so I think the, the concern would be more, if you're right, downstream of the dam. Um, for this particular development, we've worked on, my firm has worked on several projects with these Soil Water Conservation District ponds, so we performed a dam breach analysis for both, to understand where they would flood in the event of a failure. So our development, uh, you know, limits of our development stay out of that danger zone. Um, also, the latest, uh, maintenance report we have from the Soil Water Conservation District, which are within the past couple of years, show that both dams are in good shape and don't require any rehab at the current time.
So, I don't hold much faith in those reports. So, one thing I have learned today, uh, when I spoke at the Commissioner's Court, consider, uh, quite lengthy conversation with the dam Cedar Creek nine, which is what he spoke about, I want to stay on topic, just bear with me here. These, um, is it re, re, retention ponds? Am I saying that right? Detention ponds. So the, the detention ponds, like, for instance, the one that you're making, um, one thing I've learned is, some of the detention ponds would be like, it's not much of a detention pond, but that's what we sell the people on, we're making a detention pond, right? So, I don't want to put the city ever back into a position of trying to be reactive, right? You know, so here, we're at an opportunity where we can be proactive. So tell me a little bit more about the detention ponds that you're making, and when you say, uh, that they're upstream, one thing I also have learned in a very quick, fast, and in a hurry, uh, with dams is, when we make development, so these dams and retention ponds and stuff like that, they're made for no development around, right? So when we have development, now there's more runoff, so these things fill up a little faster, and then now we have some of the, the breach dams, because, uh, I've learned today, just in our district, not Rockwall, the overall district that our person oversees is, a hundred and thirty-one dams. Nine of them are on the list, and Rockwall is needing some work done. One of them, right here in McLendon-Chisholm. So, I just want to make sure before, to, uh, Councilmember Easter's point, we couldn't do nothing on this one, but we need to make sure that for our future citizens, I would think everybody up here is going to be in agreement, um, as well as the fire chief, being that we made him do overtime on this dam. So, we want to make sure that we are good with protecting people, right? I mean, I understand dollars and people, and I, I don't know how to put a value on people yet.
Um, so just a couple of clarifications. We're not constructing any new retention ponds. The two on-site are, are Soil Water Conservation ponds that are existing, and all of our homes currently proposed are upstream of the dam. So the danger would be, if you're downstream of the dam, I know this is a hot button here, because I, I think I saw on social media, y'all had a dam that was shifting and, and moving nearby, right? I think that's where most of this is, is coming from. But the concern would be, in that case, you had a couple homes, I saw just looking on Google Map, immediately downstream of that dam. In this case, you know, they're upstream, so any- know, they're upstream, so any water that would, even if the dam were to fail, which is unlikely based on the maintenance reports, there'd be no danger to homeowners or people. We don't want to harm people anymore than you all do.
Right. For your development, my question is, with the runoff that you'll have from the development, it's going to run off somewhere. What neighborhoods or people will that affect? So, to, to draw a bigger picture, the pond that you saw on the news is in Chisholm Crossing, right across the street down the way here. There's runoff that comes from way that way, right? From other development, just over time, has slowly allowed water to not do what it used to do. It doesn't have the land to absorb into the ground anymore, just all rushes to this, this reservoir. So, I want to make sure, so your development, it sounds like it will be protected. It's great news for those people. I'm talking about people who are already in existence, right? What are we, what is the protection to them? And again, not to knock Soil Water Conservation District, but the last report on that dam was good, and go look at it today. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, like I mentioned, we've done dam breach analysis and a flood study here. In general, the flood study showed that our development would decrease peak flows. That's due to the size of the watershed where the downstream end for the ponds. So, actually, developing increases how fast the water gets into and out of the pond, whereas the flows from upstream come slower. They'll get there later after the, probably too much for this here, too much in the weeds. But in general, our reports show that the flow will be decreased by the development, which is the case if you're at the downstream end of a watershed often.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, the dam he's talking about, that creek goes right past your development. So, the one that is moving, yeah, Brushy Creek. So, I call it the Brushy Creek Dam, but there's, they call it some other stuff. My next question is actually directed at Conrad. So, this is a mud that's being serviced by, who's, who's the water provider? This is High Point?
High Point.
Yeah. How, how were they able to justify getting a mud approval out there on High Point? What's, what's the situation that's going on out there? Because municipal utility districts usually require some type of efficient water service to be able to justify their application. Do we know anything about the history of that area out there?
Yeah, the development of the mud did not, the city didn't participate in any of that analysis.
Just for reference, the mud's been in place since about 2008, so it was nothing recent.
So, 2000, so, hold on, give me a quick minute. I'm perplexed that we're making a decision to install, to do a mud based upon conditions from 2008. That, that's, that's a little unnerving, quite frankly. It makes me wonder how many more of these are kind of out there. This is out in the ETJ, which is an area that is expected to at some point join the city. The city just passed a, one, we passed an ordinance for 1-acre lots. They have a comprehensive plan that supports 1-acre lots. You're familiar with these documents and these motions by the city, are you not?
I believe those came far after we started the development, and being in the ETJ, I believe, there's no zoning authority through the city as well.
I, I, I'm just saying that you're in the ETJ at this time, are you not?
Correct, yes.
But you weren't in 2008.
I was not involved back then, can't speak to when the city's ETJ...
That's what I'm saying, is these things are changing, they're evolving, they're, they're moving. And so, now you're currently in the city's ETJ where the minimum, the minimum lot size is 1, 1 acre. My back of the envelope specimen is, you're putting .2 acre, or .2 acres per house.
I will say, in the ETJ, I do not believe the city has the authority to regulate lot sizes, as I understand.
I understand that, I understand that. So, I just wanted to make sure that the public understands that I understand. So, that, that leads to the next question. What is the purpose of an ETJ?
An ETJ per state law, and we can defer this to, to our illustrious city attorney, but it creates an annexation area that is specific and distinct for the city that has claimed that ETJ. And based on population of the city, the ETJ, it can expand to greater heights. Like, the city of Dallas has, has like a 5-mile ETJ, where we have a half mile around us. And we can't take if, like the city of Heath or the city of Rockwell has already expanded into parts that we could have had in our annexation policy plan, our annexation area, potential annexation area, but they've already taken it. So, it's in there. So, we can't disturb other cities that have already developed or have done things in there or claim for their ETJ. So, in, in a whole sum, it's just like our, the state-identified annexation policy plan.
I believe Tellus Man came before the council about 2 years ago and proposed that we join with them in providing services. And we went through a lot of conversation at that point in time. But one of the things that stood out in my mind that I remember pretty vividly is that they had no desire to annex in within the city. And so, that's just a point of, of fact that, that I do remember. And I, I think they're still pretty consistent with that. You may be able to remark on that or not, but they have no intention of coming into the city. I don't want to speak for you, but that's my remembrance of the conversation at that point in time. And then, we broke off negotiations in terms of providing, providing services for you guys down there.
As far as annexation, that's correct. There's no current plans to annex into the city. The mud will be maintaining roads and sewer service on-site. I think there was a second part to your question. I'm, okay, then the other.
Yeah, I, I got a quick question. What fraction ballpark of the entire 2,700 home development is this? I mean, it doesn't look like it's that large of a portion of it. And is the remainder of the development kind of consistent with this land use pattern or this, you know, these, these lot sizes?
I'll say it's 93 lots, so 93 over 27, whatever that comes out to. A small, small percentage of the development. I'll say you're seeing a small snippet of the development here that includes only residential lots. Throughout the development, there are significant open space, amenity centers, uses of that type, potential civic uses in places. So, this isn't consistent with the overall, but the lot sizes are roughly consistent.
And with the rest of that development, as, you know, based upon what Chief Simmons said over here, is there any kind of agreement with fire service for the remainder of this? Or is that what your prior response, when you thought that it's going to be, I believe it was, I think it was Terrell Forney that was going to be providing the fire service? Do you have a different agreement for the, for the entirety of it, or is it?
I don't believe the developers entered into a formal agreement with anybody. At this time, I was speaking with Chief Simmons and his desire to keep y'all in the loop and make sure we're doing what's best for everybody. And I'm sure that's what'll be factored in.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask a question on fire service on this deal. So, I understand, wouldn't they already need to have that agreement before? I mean, like, from my knowledge, TCQ would not approve anything moving forward without some sort of fire contract, is that correct? So, so there's no fire contract currently, correct?
No, sir, correct.
So, if it's our fire district, why are we talking to another fire district? Like, I, if it's overlapped and it's the way it goes, it's the way it goes. I just, I just, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. Because that is your fire, Chief, that is the fire district for you, correct? Should that be ironed out first, or does that have any bearing on any of this?
One comment I will say, I'm hearing from y'all that we're in your fire district, I'm hearing from the county, we're in the emergency services districts, I think there might be some overlap. It's not that we're trying to leave, or...
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions from any other council members before we take this to a vote?
Just one more note on the fire service. I know we're working out quite a few things on this development at this time, but I think that, at the end of the day, the plat's in conformance with the subdivision ordinance, as Asa mentioned, which is generally the criteria for approving a plat. Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong.
Preliminary plat, correct?
Preliminary plat.
Sir, how, how can we say that it's in, in agreement with the subdivision ordinance when it doesn't meet 1 acres? Well, we need to...
Yeah, the 1-acre requirement would fall under a zoning requirement rather than the subdivision ordinance. Plats are governed by the subdivision ordinance rather than the zoning ordinance, which does not apply in the ETJ.
It's just an untamed beast, you know? It, it just really is. And what happens is, the developers know this, when they go into these ETJs, and it milks our cities, and it overruns our cities. And I mean, that's just being honest. And so, what happens is, we bear the brunt while you're still out enjoying the countryside. Our city gets infiltrated, infiltrated, rather. So, I understand the frustration of all the council members. I'm a very outspoken proponent against muds. So, I, I don't, I don't, I don't like them. I think they're a necessity when they're used right. And I think what's happened is, the developers know they can get away with some things. And it puts us in these pickles where, you know, we're legally bound to certain things. And it's just, it's just a gross negligence in legislation down at the state, and I hope that changes. I'll leave it at that. Council, if anyone has anything else. If not, then we will have to take this to a vote.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this, yeah, I'm frustrated. We don't have a school, you know? I mean, we don't have a school. 90, 93 homes, single-family lots, no school.
Just to clarify on that, there's actually a site set aside for an elementary school immediately adjacent to this plat.
We've been waiting for, yeah, how long? You know, we don't have a school. This is a problem, in my opinion.
There have been preliminary, I believe the master plan has come before this body before with prior plats, actually showing a site set aside for a school immediately adjacent to these proposed single-family lots.
How many acres is that site by the, how many acres is that site for that?
I believe it's about 12.
12, so that's an elementary school then. All right, we've had a motion and a second, so we will need to take this to a vote. I'll just go down the line on this particular one, so we can have a roll call vote, Angela, so you'll know where everybody's at. Councilmember Easter?
Yeah, I think we have pretty limited discretion on this, and, and I share your same concerns, that we have limited authority, and Austin has taken away a lot of the local government's power to control the development in and around it. But with that, I, I vote yea.
Councilmember McClendon? Councilmember Brewer? Councilmember Day?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tim Tucker?
Yeah, I would protest this vote, but that being said, this is an administrative vote, pretty much fulfill the requirements of a preliminary plat, and so I would vote yes.
Okay, this one passes 3 to... That brings us to 10.5. Angela?
10.5, discuss and consider an ordinance granting Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC, its successors and assigns, an electric power franchise to use the present and future streets, alleys, highways, public utility easements, public ways, and public property of the city of McClendon-Chisholm, Texas, providing for compensation, therefore, providing an effective date and a term of said franchise, providing for written acceptance of the franchise, providing for the repeal of all existing franchise ordinances to Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC, its predecessors and assigns, and finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public.
I entertain a motion on 10.5.
I'll make a motion that we discuss and consider the ordinance.
Second?
I'll second.
Did you get Councilmember Brewers on that second? Okay. Conrad?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You have before you a pretty unique document. It's been amended a while ago, but I mean, first, the last time we, we had this franchise agreement was back in the 1970s. Currently, the, the fiscal impact to the city is the rate being charged per kilowatt hour, and that's being unchanged from what we were before, and that's a .003192 times the kilowatt hours utilized. So, this is an agreement that has a 20-year term, that, as I mentioned, the same rate as what we've been working on. And, and it's a, it's a, an agreement that is pretty much boilerplate between all the cities that Encore works with throughout the state of Texas. We have, we have representatives from Encore here tonight to answer any of your questions. And so, I invite them to the podium, or Danielle, or whoever wants to come to the podium. And, and also maybe introduce our new representative that we're, that is going to be working with us into the future, but to answer any of your questions that you have about this specific. So, they're here to get an approval for a franchise agreement with the city of McClendon-Chisholm.
Thank you, Conrad. So, first, I want to say thank you to Christie, who is here with Encore tonight. Many of you probably don't know, or, well, everyone remembers the storms and the power outages. And every phone call I made from McClendon-Chisholm was to Christie. And I didn't realize this, but when I shared my contact with her, my picture pops up every time I would call her. So, she finally said, you know, you got to quit calling me, because you're, I get to see your face. I didn't know if that was a compliment or not, or a dig. But I wanted to say thank you. Your just unwavering support during that time, taking calls at all hours, even doing tickets with me over the phone to help people get power, and, and educating me and helping me understand, so I could get the right word out to the people. And even people that weren't in the city. She was able to help me with ETJ residents. So, I really just wanted to tell you thank you publicly for the hard work, and your replacement has some very large shoes to fill. And we're not getting rid of Christie's number, just in case, Jocelyn. Just in case. No, just kidding. So, anyway, we'll turn it over. I just want to make sure I told you thank you.
It was my pleasure, Mayor, and I enjoyed working with you as well and city staff. So, if I can ever help you with anything, please let me know. This is Jocelyn Davis. She is going to be taking my position here at McClendon-Chisholm, and she, as I... she is going to be taking my position here at McLendon-Chisholm, and she, as I told you, she will do just as good as me or better, I promise you.
Hi, everyone, I just want to say, you know, it's so nice to meet y'all, and I can't wait to work with y'all, and feel free to call me anytime, and Christie keeps saying it's not big shoes, it's cute shoes, so.
Corrected. And sir, you are?
My name is Daniel Calmontis, I'm with Encore Regulatory, so here on behalf of the franchise agreement.
So, do we have any questions up here from the dais, council member Easter?
Sure, I've got a couple of questions, and I'm looking for the specific rate that was identified in here, and I can't seem to locate it, but as far as the rate for this new change, how flexible is that rate, and what is it based upon?
So, the rate today, so I'll answer your first question, so the rate is set, and so we're not able to change that rate, initially, so it's on page four in section six, initially, the original factor that's considered the base factor came about in nineteen ninety-eight, and so at that time, it was based on gross revenues, and so the state legislature took that and divided by the consumption, and that's where that rate came from, in two thousand and six, we entered in an agreement with all of our cities to increase that rate by five percent, year after year through two thousand and nine, and so that's what the current factor is, and that is that point zero zero three one nine two, so when you take that factor, we take that and multiply it times your kilowatt hour consumption for premises within the city limits, and that's when you get your, that's where you get your franchise payment.
And historically, what have there been, what has been our annual revenues on this?
So, annually, we were just looking from, so I think your last payment was in June of this year, is that correct, through, last year was roughly, so we're looking at around, you're talking, you're pointing the total amount?
Yeah, just ballpark totals.
Ballpark, it was around, it was around forty thousand.
And that's on an annual basis?
Yes, but you pay quarterly, so you'll see quarterly payments.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify, so it's ten, ten K a quarter, or forty per year?
Roughly, depends on consumption, yes.
Plus, yeah, that's good enough for me, I don't have any further questions on this.
Council member McClendon? Council member Brewer? Council member Day?
Yeah, so actually, I was going to ask a very similar question, I had read this very carefully, section B of, or subsection B of section six, and was wondering where this came from, so I'm glad that you went over how that, when, was the last time the base rate had been calculated, and can that be done, because it looks like you negotiated a higher rate for your cities subsequent to that in two thousand and six, is that correct, is that, am I getting that history right?
So, yes, in two thousand and six, that's when it was changed, so initially, the Public Utility Commission, when we went and said that we were changing the rate, they denied it, and essentially said, you can't do that, so we went through some legal, some actions, and so through, in two thousand and nine, it was agreed upon that that was going to be allowed, but we got a stern message from the commission saying that we're not to change rates moving forward, and so that is done, and will be done at the commission, because it indicates rates and the potential to change, and so we're not allowed to do that, and so that would come from Austin, or need to be.
So, you're saying Puck is holding it at the zero zero three one nine two factor, or the current factor?
The current factor.
That's coming from Puck?
Is today's factor.
And basically, they're saying through the regulatory, we don't want, we don't want you to change that, no.
Correct, correct, because it indicates rates, yes.
Okay, thank you, those were some of my questions.
It's a very simplistic question, maybe, but this rate pertains to all cities that you associate with?
So, everybody, every city's rate with, that we service, I'll say that they're not the same, so some of them are different than others, some of them higher and lower, there are a few cities where they do have the same.
And what would be the reason, what would be the reason for one being higher or lower?
So, that goes back to the nineteen ninety-eight legislature, when they took the gross revenues four percent, and then they divided by the consumption, would have been based on the consumption at that time, and so in two thousand and six, and we agreed to raise it five percent, and so it, to answer your question, it goes back to consumption for that time period.
Okay, it would strike me as being, the revenue generated would be based, would be based on consumption, but that doesn't impact on the rate, I mean, the rate remains the same for each of the cities, does it not?
So, the factor does, but your rates vary, so as your population count grows, then the city's payments go up.
Okay, understood, I think the term of the agreement is twenty years, am I correct on that?
That's correct, in this agreement.
Is there any flexibility in amending that, that term, it seems to be rather extensive, and when I heard that it was two thousand and four, two thousand and six, when it was first initiated, I thought that was pretty extreme, can we get a five-year contract, or a three-year contract?
So, ideally, we would prefer ten, at least a minimum of ten years, and so it is amendable, the issue with going, with anything less, it's just the sheer amount of cities that we operate in, and so we would be renewing contracts with different cities, if they were every five years, everybody would want that, and so we would just get inundated, so a minimum of ten years, and so the previous agreement was actually, it was amended multiple times, so it stemmed back from the nineteen seventies, and so you originally had a lengthy agreement, so this one, our standard term is, we try to aim for twenty years, but again, a minimum of ten, and we can kind of work from there.
Yeah, I don't want to see you guys being stressed out by having to negotiate certain contracts, but that being said, twenty years seems to be rather obligatory on this panel toward, to others, future city councils, I would, if the minimum that you are going to fight for, and, you know, stand for is going to be ten, then I prefer to go with ten, myself.
For sure, so another piece of that, if something does change that is granted to one city, then we're going to give it to all of our cities, we treat everybody the same, and so if some substantial change happens within one of our cities, then again, it's going to roll out to everybody.
Does that say you won't negotiate with us at this point in time, or what does that, what does that mean?
In terms of the term?
Yeah.
No, most definitely, so all we're asking is just, if you want a ten-year term, that's totally fine, I would just request that a minimum of ten years is where we, if we can start there, but that would be our.
Okay, I'm fine, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry for the interruption earlier, so what you're saying is, is if we were to sign, let's say, let's go ahead and say a twenty-year contract, and there wasn't an improvement in the current factor, in year eight, would we benefit from that, or would we have to wait for that contract to term out?
No, you would benefit from that, so if, depending on what happened, and typically, I'm assuming this would start at the commission, and then trickle its way, but again, once that went into effect and it was approved, then we would roll it out to all of our cities, so we'd essentially have to amend all of our agreements, and so that was done in two thousand and six, we actually had to amend all of our agreements with all of our cities to account for that.
What was, what was the length of the last contract, just so I know, was it twenty years also?
No, it would have been more, so.
It was more, right?
So, it was amended multiple times, so fifty-plus years.
Oof, okay, I don't have a problem with a twenty-year contract, at least with me, I certainly won't be on this panel, so it will be somebody else's problem, but I do understand what Mayor Pro Tim is saying, that we want to make sure that we also forward thank for those that will be here after us, so we've had a motion in a second, if there's no other further discussion, unless there's, on this, just to make sure that we cover Mayor Pro Tim's concern, the motion now with this contract, that's twenty years, right? So, if there was, if somebody wants to make an amended motion to negotiate that contract, they would need to do so at this time, or?
Correct, a motion to approve with, with the condition that it, the term goes from twenty years to ten years.
Or we take it to the vote and leave as is.
Or you take it to the vote and leave as is.
Okay, so, does anyone, does anyone have any issues with a twenty-year contract, or you're good, Easter? Or council member Easter, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think that I'm good, I mean, I'm trying to understand administratively, how we would, you're going to notify, you would notify cities, and so it would be automatically increased, or if there's an increase or a change or something, I mean, that's theoretically possible too, we didn't discuss that, is there a possibility that the rate may go down, or has it gone down in the past?
Not that I've ever seen, no, and so I, no, I wouldn't see that happening, I mean, it's potential for anything, right, but again, I would see the opposite if something was to happen, but yes, we would do our due diligence and reach out to all of our cities if something like that, something like that did change.
Yeah, it sounds like six of, you know, six of one half a dozen of the other, and so I'm, I'm good with, you know, a twenty-year.
Roger that, council member McClendon, I think you were saying you were good too? Yes, sir, council member Brewer?
Yeah, I'm good with the twenty-year, as long as, if there is ever an increase in the, in the rate later, awarded from the Puck or approved from the Puck, and then we benefit from that, I don't see a problem with it.
Council member Day? I already know where you were at, so, you have any other questions or concerns? All right, let's take this to a vote, all those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
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 Four one, show that passes, and you got Mayor Pro Tim as the name, correct? All right, thank y'all for coming out. I'm going to call an audible, and I'm going to move ten point seven up, since we have somebody here to speak on that, the last two items won't have anyone here, so no reason to hold Mr. Burtsong up, so we'll move ten point seven up. Angela, on ten point seven?
Ten point seven, consideration and action to approve an upgrade and maintenance of the city council chambers audio video system.
Thank you, Angela, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion for consideration and action to approve an upgrade and maintenance of the city council chambers audio video.
Do I have a second? So, we got motion by council member Brewer, second by Mayor Pro Tim, so it's no secret that we have a wonderful audio system, and so we have reached out to talk with various companies, one of them, as you'll see in your packet on the dais, is three bids, one was from Master Video, they ended up giving a no bid, Avidex Industries Audio Visual Solution came back at seventy-nine thousand eight hundred, Tangram Technology, Scott Birdsong came back at forty-nine thousand eight hundred, with that said, Mr. Birdsong is here tonight, so if the council members or Mayor Pro Tim have any questions or concerns, he's here to address those, one thing I will point out is, since the elections in May, Mr. Birdsong has been coming in and working on the system, probably, on average, two times a month, I would say, if not more, has taken phone calls, quality control calls, has seen this system inside and out, has been able to find a way to save us the most money by recycling some of the stuff that we have, and so we're to a point where we need to give a better service to the people who watch, as well as the people who attend, and so the funds that would be used would be COVID funds, so these would be funds that were already allocated to the city, so we will not affect the overall budget, I'm a proponent for this, it needs to happen, some of the stuff that's going to come with it is, when, and Scott, I'll probably ask you a few questions here in a second, but from one of the things I know is, when we make a vote, I can just call the vote, and you, I believe you'll hit a button, yes or no, and it will show up on the screens, so that way the people see the vote, and we won't have to go down the line, raise hands, and do everything, and what I think that does is also gives a little integrity to the dais, when you hear somebody vote, we're all human, it could, you kind of start thinking in your head, but you just got to push the button, now you're on, you're on, right, fate does it this way, Rockwall does it this way, it's just the right way to do business, so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Scott, so he can tell us a little bit about what the system that he proposes as well, on some of these things, and then if y'all have any questions, please direct them to Scott, Scott?
Thank you, mayor, yeah, so basically, what we're looking at is just obviously upgrading the microphone system, I know that we've got a lot of elements that are broken, and we've got a lot of feedback issues and volume issues that we consistently have, that is, that's the, kind of the first step, is to clean that up, and that would be replacing microphones, replacing the little base stations here, and like Mayor spoke of, these new units are, have some voting capability built into them, they also have the speaker, kind of similar to what you have now, but the overall quality is just, just much, much better, what that's going to do is not only going to improve the sound here in the chambers, but also be able to improve the sound for the people listening at home, and watching at home, so that's kind of the first step of that system, the loudspeakers that are in the room, the plan is to, to take some of these down from the wall, and actually do a distributed audio system, so that the idea is to get the speakers a little bit closer to the people, it's a very lively room, obviously, lots of sound bounces around, and the goal is to try to get the system so that Mr. Ted can, can hear very, very well, but the, yeah, the overall goal is to just improve the sound in the chambers here, along with the broadcast that's going out to the homes, and then the other upgrade that we've, we kind of looked at was, part of that would be some of the, helping out some of the video, which would improve the camera views for the streaming, along with being able to, just the ease of use, being able to operate the system a little bit better, and pull up Google Maps and things like that quickly, when they're, when they're needed, so that's kind of it in a nutshell. We'd also, you know, be able to provide, I live here, I'm a, I live here in McLendon-Chisholm, so we'd be able to provide some just services, maintenance, being able to be here when, you know, when we're needed, and be able to assist any way we can, so that it's a smooth, smooth meetings every time.
Very good, council member Easter?
Yes, thank you for showing up and giving us a little bit of background on this, because I think it's really important to have a good AV system for the folks at home, and for everyone here that might miss some meetings, we can go back and listen to it with a lot more clarity, is there something similar that you may have built for any other cities or other users that we might be able to go take a look at to get an idea exactly what you're referring to?
Yeah, absolutely.
And test drive it?
Yes, sir, yeah, over the years, I've been doing this about thirty-five years, and I've got systems in the city of Burleson, we've done some work for the city McKinney, we've done work for Garland ISD, they've got, they've got kind of a council chamber there, yeah, kind of all over, so I can definitely send you some references you can pull.
Yeah, it'd be very helpful, because it's been very frustrating for us, and it eats up a lot of time and creates a lot of frustration, and fortunately, tonight, we haven't had a lot of feedback and everything that we've experienced in the past, and I think it'll make it a much more conducive for meetings, thank you.
Absolutely.
The reason we haven't is, is thanks to Scott, he's, came in after we had the fuzzy debacle, he came in and spent quite some time here to get us to where we'll be able to maintain until the system is replaced, so the reason we haven't had the feedback is because of him coming in and doing that, but we still have had, the, the video at home does not have the quality yet, we're just able to tolerate the business here, but we're still at home not.
That reminded me, on these other similar systems that you've installed, do you know if they have video capabilities, so if we wanted to go back and listen to some of their prior meetings, that we could review those, and that would be kind of an indicator or something?
Yeah, absolutely, most of those have, now, some of the systems that I did further, like, you know, before, I'd say, the pandemic, they, streaming was not a big thing, and those systems have been upgraded, but I can definitely send you a list, and kind of, you can reference video, past video, things like that.
And that would be helpful, and what would be the timeline for installation, once the contractor, whatever authorization that you would need is approved?
Yeah, right now, um, we are, uh, we're running about, uh, six weeks or so out, uh, from when the approval happens. Um, that includes, you know, getting equipment in, uh, and then getting it on the schedule. And of course, we'd want to work at a time where, uh, we're not interrupting your, your meetings, so.
So yeah, within two months, you could probably get it all going. And then you did mention that you're in the area, so if you needed to come back and tweak it or something like that, that would be a possibility?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
Councilmember McLennan? Councilmember Brewer?
My only question is, will that TV ever turn on?
That's a great question. And we are going to work on that. And maybe find a TV for this pipe over here that was, you know, that's missing.
Yeah, be all connected to.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the goal is to have it so everyone can see in here, absolutely. Yeah, and that may be supplementing some TVs here, sure.
So one of the other goals, um, glad he brought up the TV. There's a TV out in the hallway, uh, which he was going to allow, uh, different updates as people walk in. They'll be able to see, you know, whether it's, you know, a picture from, you know, like a proclamation or something. So when people are walking in, they're able to see updates, things that are on the city's schedule, upcoming agendas, stuff like that. The beautiful hope is these TVs that are to our right and left will literally face the audience.
Right.
And we would hopefully have a TV, TV up top center so that we would be able to see what's going on. Um, so we're not having to bend our head and, and get the sheen or so on. So I know that was one of the things, um, that was talked about as well, just to allow us better use.
Yeah.
Councilmember Day?
So this, the current system here is plagued by a lot of issues, as you brought up earlier. And one of them is, is that the, the people that installed it didn't maintain it. They, they just took off.
Right.
Um, what would a service agreement look like going on into the future, making sure that we had regular upgrades, maintenance and all this other stuff? And I understand you're a resident here, so you live here locally.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So it's a great question. So, uh, our company has maintenance contracts with all corp, all of our corporate customers. Usually we'll purchase a maintenance contract. A lot of our government, uh, will, will do that as well, um, and government contractors, um, in, in the Dallas area. Uh, and what that looks like is that the first, uh, you typically with a system that we sell, the first year is what we just call a workmanship warranty. Um, it covers the work that we've done. Um, and, uh, and, but what we can do is put together a, a, a package for you guys that says, hey, if you want to do an annual, uh, contract, we can do that, or we can do a five-year contract. Really, it's kind of customized to whatever really works best for you guys. Um, and then we just price that out and that would be, that would cover, typically that covers a quarterly maintenance visit, uh, where we come out and we have a technician come out, hit all the buttons, turn everything up and down, make sure everything works right. Um, but that also covers, uh, kind of those emergency calls that are required. If, if, if you've got a meeting that's starting and we need to get a technician out here, then we would be able to cover that as well. Yes, sir. And I can get your pricing on that for sure.
Mayor Pro Tim?
A ballpark pricing on that, considering the, the overall cost of the system? You have in mind, I mean, just?
I don't. I, I could, I can tell you that, um, uh, my, my trip charge, uh, usually if I'm going to roll a truck out with, with, uh, with a technician to come out, there's usually a $300 kind of start charge to get rolling.
So you're saying without a maintenance, without a maintenance contract?
Yeah, I apologize.
That would be the cost of having somebody come out?
Right, and that would.
So with a maintenance contract, and I, I don't mean to.
No, you're fine.
With a maintenance contract, that charge is not applied?
Right. You're, you're correct, yeah.
So, yeah, and this was the question I was going to ask is on maintenance. Having had computers and such in my, my practice, I, I, you know, maintenance was always a very costly event for us. So, you know, having those numbers I thought would be here now, but obviously you're going to have those up. I thought you might just out of back your, you know.
Yeah, I apologize.
You might have something for this kind of system setup.
Right. Um, yeah, I would hate to just kind of throw a number out there and not be accurate.
Okay. So the other thing would be the longevities of the equipment in, in general, uh, replacements. How often would we be looking at replacements for microphones, for, for cameras, that kind of thing? I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. Most of the devices that we sell will have a, a three-year or a five-year warranty. That's, that's typically what they, uh, what the manufacturer says that they're willing to warranty it. Um, a lot of the equipment that is not, that's not handled, uh, by people, uh, usually, you know, uh, can last you 10 years easily. Um, and that's things like cameras, things that are up in the air, things that are out of the way. Uh, speakers last forever. Microphones get abused. Um, people grab them, push them around. So, uh, so those are typically, you know, uh, they don't, they don't live as long. Uh, but the nice thing is with the new units here, you can, you can, they're modular, so we can actually just replace just parts of the mic, just replacement parts. Um, but, but I, but I know that, uh, that with the upgrading system here, a, a good five, eight years, you guys will be, you guys will be solid. It'll be definitely be worth, uh, you know, worth the investment on, on the upgrade here.
So five to eight years, are you talking about total replacement of, of another?
Before you have a component go down, I would say, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, not the entire system. Yep, yep, yep.
I think that was it, mostly on maintenance and durability. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, just for a point of clarity for the public, um, we don't currently have this type of line item budgeted for the city. So where would the money be coming from?
It would be the COVID funds. We, we would, uh, not be taking it from the, uh, line item budget. I wouldn't want to do that, uh, to the people. I mean, this was just a, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Tucker can recall when the system was put in. Uh, I don't believe any of us were on the, uh, dais at that time. And it just has not even made it to the, you know, a component failure for five to eight years. It's just made it to a, an utter failure. Um, the best example I can give was the council meeting when we had no sound to give people. Like anyone, even in here, I, I mean, we should have called the meeting. It was awful. Um, so, uh, we've had the, the, the motion and the second. Um, I would like to see us at least approve up to a certain amount. Uh, would that be not to exceed, uh, in the verbiage, not to exceed a certain amount? And we, and we get the ball rolling. Um, every time we push this back two more weeks, that now takes us to October. Uh, two more weeks technically takes us to November. And then all of a sudden, we're back in, uh, 2025 and, and we've done nothing to, uh, solidify the system. We've, we've done the bids. We had this on the agenda last time. We pulled it to get bids. We got bids. Scott's here to talk. Um, I think we need to put this to rest so we can get moving. Um, I would, uh, entertain a motion not to exceed, uh, $50,000 of COVID funds so that we can authorize Scott, uh, and, uh, Tangram Technology to get started. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion for that. Or do we need to redo the motion since we've already taken one? Because we didn't put in, we did not put it, do not exceed. So we need, we need to amend the motion to do not exceed for Tangram Technology, not to exceed 50,000. So is that good enough then? If it's in the, if it's in this staff report? Still needs to be a motion. Okay, so we need to make that motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve a, not to exceed $50,000 for a new system, um, by, was it Tangram? By Tangram Technologies.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by, uh, Councilmember McLennan and motion by Councilmember Easter. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And show that unanimous. Scott, thank you. And, um, Conrad, if we can, uh, reach out to Scott's team by the end of this week, uh, so we can get this ball rolling, uh, we owe that to the people. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stafford, doing all the work on this. Now we'll go back to 10.6, Angela.
10.6, discuss and consider approval of an ordinance authorizing restricted prior service credit for employees who are members of the Texas municipal retirement system.
Conrad. Oh, well, sorry. We need to make a motion.
Yeah, I, I move that we discuss and consider approval of an ordinance authorizing restricted prior service credit for employees who are members of the Texas municipal retirement system.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, and we will open this up to discussion. Conrad?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, within the city of McLennan Chisholm, while staffer authorized, the city council has, has approved authorization to be part of the Texas municipal retirement system. Um, this, this agenda item would allow, um, um, anyone currently or into the future, um, that becomes a staff member here at the city, um, to utilize or be granted restricted private, private service credit or RPSC, um, for credit previously performed, um, as an employee of an entity described in, um, and get into the weeds of section 853.305, subtitle G of title eight of the Texas government code. So that RPSC, which is a restricted prior service credit, um, includes such things as a public authority or agency created by the United States, working for the federal government, um, any state or territory. So if you work for the state government anywhere in the United States, any political subdivision of any state, um, of the United States, any public agency or authority created by a state or territory of the United States, active duty military service, previously forfeited service with TMRS or one of the following retirement systems, like the teachers' retirement systems of Texas, um, the employees' retirement systems of Texas and judicial. Um, in our plan with TMRS, um, okay, I think with every plan of TMRS, there's a five-year vesting period, meaning that you cannot receive any other retirement if you don't work at least five years. This, this, um, agenda item allows future employees to utilize their service in the military or in a state, federal, other, other governmental, um, entity, including teachers, um, to, to utilize their time period there as part of their vesting requirement. So if they were there five plus years, they would immediately start vested with the, with TMRS instead of having to wait five years. Um, so that's all it is. There's no fiscal impact to the city. It's a, it's a, all it is is a, a benefit for current and future, um, employees of the city to become vested in, in the, our TMRS system. It's just a, an, an amount of time that, that they have set at TMRS. This is a TMRS requirement for any member of TMRS, every city, that they have to work within the entity, um, for that five-year period before they're eli, not before they're eligible for retirement, they're eligible to be retirement eli, to be retirement eligible. How about that? Well, they, it, it doesn't mean that they're eligible to quit after five years to get the money. If they quit after five years, they will get the money, um, that was put in there, but they have to meet that other criteria of 60 years old or 30 years of service or something. I mean, so they would be eligible for that. Otherwise, if they don't become vested, they get back their money that they have, have put into it, but any matching money that the city put into it will not go to them.
Councilmember Easter?
Now, just to piggyback on Dan's, just to make sure that I understand it, this basically asks as a waiver of this five-year requirement that one would need to satisfy in order to qualify for this, uh, uh, the prior service credit. So, so that, so that if you had five years service in any of these other entities, once you come to McLennan, McLennan Chisholm, you'd be immediately eligible?
Correct. There is, there is a little paperwork that we'd have to submit to TMRS, but yes, exactly. You're correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure. And there's no fiscal impact to the city at all?
No fiscal impact.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McLennan? Councilmember Brewer?
Councilmember Easter said something. I was going to respond to that. Um, and then I just forgot what I was going to say. So it's getting long. Uh, oh, I was just going to say, it just, it's, it is a, it's something that pretty much all cities do now. There's only, oh, I don't remember now. Uh, you can only use that once, as I understand it. If you said you wanted to add that to your time with the city of McLennan Chisholm, and then you, you couldn't use the same, say, 10 years in the military with another city if you moved on to them, that credit is applied to, that's my understanding.
Councilmember Day?
Well, actually, that's an interesting question. I was wondering if Conrad had a response before I asked my question.
What is the question?
To Mr. Brewer's observation of it being, uh, available only for a single time.
Yeah, well, once you've met the vesting requirement, doesn't matter where you go, you're vested. So it is a true statement, but, yeah, I mean, you wouldn't need to have it again and again and again. Um, but I'm sure it's written that way probably of, of what he quoted.
So you're saying, let's say, I, some, your city administrator at three different cities, you don't need to use it subsequent times?
Once, once I hit the five-year vesting, I'm vested with TMRS.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, I mean, I looked at it. I read, read through it. I actually talked to Conrad beforehand about it. My understanding, and I guess I should ask Conrad straight out ahead, has there been any kind of poll of the staff to see how they feel about this type of change?
There has not been a poll of the staff.
If the, if this, if, if, if this is done, if this is done, does ASA get that? Or is it, so he would, the, the 25 I was talking about, he would then now get that?
Current and future employees.
It allows ASA, in essence, to not lose that 25 months. Okay?
Well, hold on. So we're, we're, we're off, we're having off mic. And by the way, YouTube can't hear if you guys go off mic. So it's important, yeah. So it's, so to that point, you got 25, but in your case, we're just, this is anecdotal, 25 months that you would recover from doing this. So the fiscal impact in your situation would be not to the city, it would be to TRS, who if you, who is losing the 25 months of matching pay, it is now being returned to you. Is that what's happening? Am I getting that correct? Am, is that correct, Mr. Manager? Okay. Um, uh, yeah, that's, that's all I needed. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim? All right, we've had a motion and a second. We'll just take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And show that unanimous. Congratulations on your 25 months, ASA. Angela, I'm 10.8.
Discuss and consider creating an economic committee made up of McLennan Chisholm citizens acting in advisory capacity for future commercial development within the city.
I'll entertain a motion on this one.
I would like us to discuss and consider creating an economic development committee.
Do I have a second? We fight for seconds there. I love it. Um, we'll give that one to, uh, Mayor Pro Tim since it went to Councilmember Brewer last time. Um, I'll start this. So it's not setting up an economic, uh, commission, an EDC. It's not what this is. What this is is to actually protect the city, um, to make sure that we are getting the right businesses to come in. So obviously. So obviously, we want to make sure that the comp plan is, is protected. That is, that is our, I guess, our bible for a lack of better terms right now. And so, you know, they, people present stuff to ASA. They present it to the council, they present it to P and Z. The economic commission or, excuse me, not commission, committee would be a hope of about three to five citizens, not of the council. Because I wanted it to be citizens that can actually kind of go out and, and maybe secure the right businesses for the right growth. So McLennan Chisholm, we all know, it's not going to be able to survive on the rooftops. We're going to, we have to bring in commercial development. And I feel like if we get the citizens, one of the words mentioned tonight, you know, showing an interest, they're going to protect what they have and they're going to want the right businesses here. You know, we don't want to see, you know, the vape shops or the, you know, I, I don't even know what half the shops are out there anymore. But I, I know we want the right growth, we want the right look, we want the right feel. We know we're going to hold developers to that standard. And so if we're holding developers to a standard to make sure McLennan Chisholm stays McLennan Chisholm, then we would hope that the ones that are here bringing the business are, are the right ones. So that's really all this is. If, 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 if we get it created, then I will, I will get with the council and try to figure out how we would want to work it, how we'd want it to be, you know, how they would be a part of things. But I, I think it can be a smart thing. Other cities have something like this. Being on the strategic planning, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of different things. And a couple of strategic planning meetings ago, economic development was huge. And we are a city, but we're a thirteen-by-thirteen county. And so whatever we do in McLennan Chisholm, it does affect fate, it does affect Rockwall, it does affect Heath. So if everyone's working together for that same common goal to protect Rockwall County in a whole, it will protect McLennan Chisholm to be the right economic.